Welcome to the Lancaster City Council meeting that's almost live. Okay, more virtual than live, but we're live, right?
We're live.
We're getting there. City Clerk, can you call the roll?
City Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Doris.
Here.
Doris, this one.
He's here.
Here.
Molly.
Present.
Man.
Present.
Vice Mayor, excuse me, Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Crist.
Present.
Mayor Chairman Harris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And we have someone doing the invocation tonight. Pastor Darrell Doris, you're probably going to have to go to jail for this, but I'd like you to do the prayer.
Father, we thank you right now. We thank you for the city council meeting. We thank you, Lord, for the leaders that you have placed in this city. We pray right now that you give us wisdom and knowledge. We pray right now that you continue to lead and guide us to make this city great. We ask right now, God, for unity. We ask that you continue to allow us to strive, to allow Lancaster to be a place of prosperity, a place of peace. We give you praise and glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Councilman Molly, would you do the pledge?
Right hand over your heart, please, join me in the profession. I pledge the allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Manager, anything to remove?
No, sir. Thank you. I would like to make a comment, though. As you can see, we've done some updates to the council chambers as well as the technology. So bear with us, we're working on it. And eventually, once we get full operational, the full technology be operational efficiently, and everything will work far better than than tonight. But if we have issues tonight, bear with us and we apologize. But we're looking forward to a new look in the council chambers and a new technology operation. So thank you, guys.
So, I mean, when COVID's all done, we can get rid of the Plexiglas, right?
You may want to keep the two between you and Marvin, but we can get rid of everything else.
That was a softball.
Notice I didn't swing?
All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it passes unanimously. Okay, let's move on to the emergency declaration, the ED1 COVID-19 pandemic.
I have a question.
Mr. Mayor, I think-
Do we have to do roll call vote because we are under?
No, we are all present, so we are okay. You are all present in the chambers, so because you are all present in the chambers, we can do voice vote. But thank you for checking.
You know, I, these cameras are too good. I had to comb my hair, you know, wash my face. You should have warned me. This is unacceptable.
Mayor Harris, we did have a presentation on the annual financial report for the audit, I believe.
I couldn't hear a word she said.
She said we had a presentation that we skipped.
Yeah, there's a presentation. If you want to put it later in the meeting, we can. But we did have the audited financials on the agenda.
All right, you guys-
But it's not on your script, which is why you missed it.
It's the next one.
Did you want to sit up here, Allison?
No, I'm just letting you know it's on your agenda.
I apologize. If it's not on your script, it's okay. George Harris, Finance Director. We'll be brief, but there is a short presentation by the auditors to cover the fiscal audit that was performed for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020. We would typically be making this presentation around the February-March timeframe. We do apologize because of the delay. It was our first year as your new finance team in conducting the audit, and we just wanted to make sure we located where all the bodies were buried. And making sure it was right was better than making sure it was right now. So we were able to do that and get through with very limited findings, as you'll see with the presentation. The presentation will be conducted by Daphne Munoz with our auditing firm of Clifton, Larson &amp; Allen. They'll be doing that via Zoom. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Daphne. If you wouldn't mind sharing your screen with the slides, and we'll turn it over, and I'll be available answering the questions afterwards.
I'm assuming everybody can see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Daphne Munoz, Partner Principal at Clifton, Larson &amp; Allen. And I'm here tonight to present to you the results of our audit for the year ended June 30, June 30, 2020, for the city of Lancaster. So the scope of our services is to the audit of the annual financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2020, in accordance with generally accepted and governmental auditing standards. We also perform an audit of the federal grant expenditures under uniform guidance. This is because the city spent more than $750,000 in federal expenditures. We also perform an agreed-upon procedures related to the city's calculation of the appropriations limit. So the first thing I would like to talk about is our independent auditor's report, which is in page one of the comprehensive annual financial report. It talks about the period that is covered by audit. We are auditing the financial statements for the period July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020. The financial statements are the responsibility of the management. They are responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements. Our responsibility as auditors is to express opinions on the financial statements and whether they are presented fairly in all material respects. The standards require us to plan the audit and perform to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. We are not giving an absolute assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatements because we've examined, the evidence that we've examined are on a test basis. We did not examine all transactions that occurred during the year. We have obtained audit evidence that are sufficient and appropriate to provide as a basis for our audit opinions. So for the year ended June 30, 2020, despite the delay, we did provide an unmodified opinion. This is, in layman's terms, this is clean opinion, which means that the financial statements are free of material misstatements. We've also issued a report on internal control over financial reporting. So in planning our audit, we considered the city's internal controls over financial reporting to determine our audit as a basis for our audit procedures. However, the purpose of our audit is not to express opinions on those internal controls. So our audit was not designed to identify all deficiencies in internal control. We did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be material weaknesses. However, we did have two significant deficiencies related to year-end procedures and construction in progress and capital assets. Our professional standards require us to communicate certain information related to our audit. First, the significant accounting policies. Again, management are responsible for the selection and use of the appropriate accounting policies. And these policies are described in Note 1 to the financial statements. The financial statements include accounting estimates, and these are an important part of the financial statement and are based on the management's knowledge and experience about past and current events and assumptions about future events. The most sensitive estimates that are included in the financial statements are the annual required contribution, the pension expense, net pension liability, and related deferred inflows and outflows. And these are based on actuarial valuations provided by third-party consultants. Same thing with the actuarially determined contribution, open expense, and net open liability are based on actuarial valuations provided by third-party. And lastly, the management's estimate regarding claims payable liabilities related to the general liability are based on estimates by claims administrators and actuarial valuations. The audit was delayed, as George mentioned, because of the limited resources. Therefore, we were not able to perform the audit in a timely manner. We proposed certain adjustments for which management have all corrected. We did not have any disagreements with management. Management have represented to us that they have provided us all information that are necessary to our audit. Management did not consult with other independent accountants, and we did not have any other audit findings or issues that we think need to be communicated with those charged with governance. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Can you go back to the two significant findings that you had?
Yes. Sorry.
Are you contracted to do our next audit?
Yes, we are. We are contracted for June 30, 2021 audit.
Next year, when you give us a presentation, can you give it and tell us what you did do rather than what you didn't do?
Yes, so as far as the findings that we have this year, we will be following up and make sure that those have been corrected. In the letter, the management actually have presented a corrective, a plan of corrective action for those findings.
Can you go back to those two significant findings?
Can you read the others?
There.
This slide?
Yes.
And so, Daphne, I believe the Vice Mayor is asking for a little explanation around those.
Oh, sorry. Yes. So the first finding, it has something to do with, again, the limited procedures. So there was an unusually large number of city-prepared and auditor-proposed journal entries to the city's accounts after the start of our audit final filler. So which means that after we were given the trial balance for the audit, there were numerous journal entries that is necessary to get to the final trial balance. And again, I think this is a combination of the staff turnover and the limited resources that really resulted to the delay of the audit. And the second finding is the construction in progress. When we reviewed the construction in progress schedules, there were certain projects that should have been closed and moved to capital assets, but they were not. And also, the capital assets, subsidiary ledgers for the capital assets were not fully up to date and required several revisions before they were able to reconcile to the general ledger.
George?
Yes, so, in essence, this was the first year that this team had conducted the audit. Prior to us, you had a team that had been here for 30 years and led by someone that had been with the organization for 30 years. So a lot of the transactions that took place over the course of 30 years that are still somewhat relevant in your financials today, they know it, like, it's their own family life. Like, they know the organization, they know the transactions. And so, we took extra time to make sure we were fully aware of what had happened historically with the city and make sure that we were actually able to gather the information in the financial system as thorough as we possibly could to make sure we had a full understanding. And so, to me, I call it, you know, we need to know where all the bodies were buried before we can report to an outside party that what we see in the system was accurate. And it did take some time. I expect next year that that is not going to be the case. We have a team that's now been here. Nika Nowak, who is our finance manager, who led the audit and primarily handled the audit process herself. This was her first year doing it. And in fact, so she had to take time to actually go back and actually go through those transactions, become familiar with those transactions before we were comfortable reporting them off to the auditor. We still have a clean audit. The only finding truly that I see is the, well, one of the two, is just, we took extra time to make sure we got it right. Typically, you want to get your audit done within 180 days after the close, which is December, which would had us presenting this to you in the January-February timeframe. At that time, we were still researching things and making sure that we had a pretty clear understanding with this current team as to what's going on. I would expect this audit to be delivered this next year in the February timeframe.
Okay.
The second item on capital assets that really has to do with the projects being closed out, and then it's an actual accounting procedure we go through to close out the project and actually book it as an asset. As a result of us really trying to get to understand those capital projects and make sure they were completed, it did take a little bit longer. It's not that they didn't take place at all, it just didn't take place timely. And so, we took extra time making sure we got it right. And that's really the reason for both of those findings. Okay, thank you. Daphne, could you take down your chair?
Thank you. Okay, let's hear about the pandemic. Is that Larry up there? Larry cut his hair.
Great, well, we'll turn it over to Dr. Trong, as we always do, and he's got his presentation. And we'll take any questions and give you some updates in regard to vaccines and other things.
Thank you. Can you see the slide?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. So first slide here talks about what's going on in the world. Basically, we now have 159 million cases, 3.31 billion deaths. If you look at the graph to the right, the seven-day average for the world appears to be rising. And maybe in the past week, it's dipping a little bit. Looking down at the 14-day change, it's dropping a little bit, about 5%. And deaths are usually lags of cases, so it's up 1%. Where are all these cases coming from? The majority of it is 329,000 new cases in India and Brazil. The United States, we still rank third. But if you look at the map on the right, in terms of the coloration that tells us how many cases are, we're actually in a very favorable area. Light orange, Brazil, India, Mongolia, and other sites are really in the purple, a deep purple range with high rates in those countries. And we talked about this previously. The cost for the India's outbreak is multifactorial. They have a new variant of concern. They also had reduced their mask wearing. There's a sense that it's over, but really it wasn't. There's a lot of large gatherings for religious, political events. And basically, they weren't expecting a surge like this. Here in the United States, things are going very well. We have a total of 33 million cases, 596 deaths. But if you look at the seven-day average, it continues to trend favorably downward. And 14 days hospitalizations down, deaths also down as well. So in the United States, things are looking very good. California, we used to be number one in total cases and total deaths, and we still are. However, in terms of new cases, we are ranked number eight in the country. And if you look at the color map, basically, California is in the lightest range with the least cases, 100,000. Even Oregon, Washington, and others, states, Colorado, Michigan, they're higher than California. So California is really in a very good shape. Going further down to LA County, we are really in excellent shape. Only 248 cases reported as of May the 9th. This was, and we are now a yellow tier, which is minimal. In fact, we're actually better than Orange County or even San Diego as a county. And basically, this is the lowest tier. There's no green tier. Green means it's wide open. So right now, we're in the minimal stage tiers, very favorable. You've seen this before. The light blue on the left is basically the daily cases, barely even visible. And deaths also dropping as well. The map to the right tells us total cases. The Allo Valley is the medium blue. Santa Clarita, a light blue. San Fernando Valley, medium blue, very similar to the Allo Valley. And downtown LA areas and East LA, also medium to even dark blue. The coastal cities are light blue, so that's very favorable. And then going to the adjusted case rate for LA County, it's at 11,091. Palmdale, I mean, Lancaster is higher, at 13,699. And Palmdale is even higher, at 15,500. Going to the deaths, 400,000. LA County is 218,000. We are doing better, at 200,000 per 100,000. And Palmdale is not doing so well, 253,000 per 100,000. So there's now a very, a lot of concerted effort at predicting and forecasting what's going to happen in COVID. As of at least March 29th, the CDC chief, Walensky, was worried about impending doom of COVID. And as you can see from the map here, the cases are rising. And these cases were primarily Michigan, New York, New Jersey, Florida. So there was concern that, at least in end of March, early April, Easter vacation, Easter break, spring break, all that will probably lead to even more serious and substantial fourth wave. However, it did not happen. In fact, it actually, the actual cases actually dropped as of May the 1st. And there are about 28 organizations that basically are doing the math to predict what happens. And for example, UCLA, USC is in there, Johns Hopkins, Georgia University. Many organizations are actually using their statisticians, epidemiologists to predict. And for the most part, everyone is predicting a drop in total cases going forward for 30 days, the next 30 days. And pretty much, it's called, all of this together is called an ensemble. Basically, everyone's predicting that at least until June 1st, we are going to continue to see drops in cases, and so it's very favorable. They are also predicting for LA County, we are continuing to draw further. And at least as a group, everyone's predicting down to probably less than 1,000 cases total. Here, the ensemble is the same. There's a moderate drop, there may be an increase at the tail end. And that's because of the unpredictability of variance. And just a little bit more about the variants. The B.117 initially isolated out of England has now become the predominant strain in the United States. It is now at 59.6%, basically 60% of all the cases. And that's going to be, and that is the wild card here. It may be that it may cause a surge through May, but then the vaccinations will counter it, and then there will be a sharp decline. So the forecast is that a very favorable rest of May and maybe a slight increase depending on the states, but also basically a sharp decline. There may be a peak coming going forward in November, December, like this past year, as people gather together for holiday celebrations and travel. And that may cause an increase. But we should be prepared for that if everyone gets their vaccine to the 70th percent time. So now, we have three approved vaccines in the United States. And on Monday, the FDA also approved the Pfizer vaccine to be given to younger children between 12 and age of 15, 12 to 15 years old. And this is important because, you know, we are now heading into the summer. A lot of travel, a lot of outdoor activity. But in the fall, when school returns, many school programs, many colleges are now requiring that children get vaccinated before they go back to school. So this is going forward. And it's predicted, Pfizer also submitted its request for age 2 to 12. And it's supposed to be approved, expected to be approved in September. And then in December, from age month, eight months and on, same vaccine will probably be approved sometime November, December. So by the end of the year, we should have a vaccine that's able to be given from eight months and on. So that's really going to help us end this pandemic, at least in the United States. So a little bit about the vaccine. Currently, the CDC tracks, as of May the 10th, 58.2% of adults have at least one shot of a vaccine. And as you can see from the map here, most of the country is still in the 30%, 40% range of vaccination. And very few states are higher than that, or pockets of states that are higher than that. In April, we were giving out 3 million doses per day. It looks like there's been a drop. And the government, especially the president's team, is basically trying to change their tactic to basically now, instead of large sites, basically giving it to local, small, even pediatric clinics and small sites so that it can be given out more readily. But currently, we're at 2.12 million doses per day. Pfizer is the most vaccine given, moderna, a million doses. G&amp;G was doing pretty well until there was an issue with blood clotting in women of birthbearing age. And so, there's a lag now with the Johnson &amp; Johnson, although it's been allowed to be used again. So the CDC predicts that at the current pace, we should reach a 70% vaccination by mid-July, maybe August, August 24th, right here. But now, with the addition of the 12- to 15-year-old approval, this graph may be more vertical, and we may reach the 70th percent hopefully by July 4th. And we may reach the 70th percent hopefully by July, by July 4th. So that's the state of vaccinations. This is really important. LA Times tracks the people, the population of infection and percentage of death of the population. The key here is that the 0 to 4 years old, 5 to 17, and 18 to 34, if you add all these percentages together, they make up 45% of the population. If this group of our population doesn't get the vaccine, really, we can't reach a 70% as quickly as we need to. So with approval of the 12 to 15, we are now down to the 15th percentile group. And hopefully, at least these 20% will eventually get their vaccine and get all of us to a 70 percentile level. Going to LA County vaccination efforts as of May the 5th, this is 8.3 million doses. 58% received one dose and 40% received the full vaccination. And this is really nice here. 65% of those over age 65, which is the hardest hit for mortality. 82% of them are, have received the first dose and 67 completed the entire series. Breaking down, breaking down to the particular sites, the city of Lancaster, we received 49, 689 vaccinated. And that's about 39 points, close to 40% of the population. Palmdale has a little bit more, 45% of the population have been vaccinated, based on the LA County tracking sites. There remains a mismatch, but it's slowly going away, given the effort. We did point it out here at this meeting, the mismatch. Here, we are medium blue in the Antelope Valley, but with, in terms of total vaccination, we're light green. And lighter is less. The coastal cities have light blue, which is less cases, but they're very strongly, strong green, a medium green, dark green, representing a deeper penetration of vaccination. It is going, it is improving, but more efforts were probably needed. And that ends my presentation. I will stop sharing.
Any questions?
One question. The eight months to 12 years, are they going to get also two vaccines or just one?
Right now, it's a Pfizer vaccine, so it's two shots.
No, for the eight month, you were saying the kids.
Yes, they're submitting the same, yes, they're submitting the same vaccine. So it's a two shot. They may change, but so far, at least, that's what they're submitting for review.
Thank you.
Did you say the schools were going to require the vaccine?
There's talk about it. The national press talk about it during LA County presentations. But I have not seen the official, the official paperwork to say that they will require it. But it's looking, leaning that way.
Yeah, from a personal perspective, my son's college and my daughter's college both are requiring vaccines to re-attend college.
They're not going back, are they? No, I'm kidding.
They're already vaccinated.
All right, so we need another contest, right? Let's do this one by schools. The school that has the most kids vaccinated between the ages of 12 and 15 gets the prize. You like that? So.
Better strategy.
Better strategy, isn't it? Well, I can't take the other one away. We've already committed to it. So.
Well, we'll work on a program to add to that program and make it sure that it's a balance between each school for population and do it right, and it'll be good.
Oh, you want to actually use statistics?
Yeah, we'll do it right. We've had a very positive response from the.
An intelligent analysis of this?
It might be late.
Women, you know, we're talking about people who don't get vaccinated. They don't want intelligence.
We've had a very positive response to the 10K challenge already. And I'll reiterate, we've got your $10,000 or as close to, I think it's 15, $15,000 for first and second prize. So we're getting a lot of positive response on that. Just a note, the fairgrounds itself, I know Dr. Trong mentioned how many were vaccinated in Lancaster. The fairgrounds itself has done 57,000 vaccinations since it started. So we've made a big dent. And we're still pushing forward. We had a meeting with a group called SALVA with Daryl just the other day, which is a Latino organization. They were trying to do some outreach to some of the disadvantaged communities and do some more specific targeting. So we're not giving up. We still have opportunities out there to get people vaccinated. There is no appointments required at the fairgrounds today. So get vaccinated. There's no excuses, I think, to verify. I think we're open on Saturdays and Sundays now as well. Looking for a nod. Yeah, Metrolink stations Saturday and Sunday that's available. So there is no excuse not to get a vaccine.
Okay, so put together a contest for the schools. I wanted to apply to all the schools in, in the Antelope Valley. I don't want to limit it to Lancaster, you know, with the theory being that we're so intertwined. We need the whole valley vaccinated. And you're going to match this with your campaign money? I mean, you're sitting on so much money.
He loves to spend my money.
I mean, I'm serious, Marvin. You've got so much money in that campaign account. You could run for governor and there'd still be money left over. So you're going to, you're going to match?
Sure, I will if Ken will.
Well, that's.
Exactly.
Okay, you in?
My campaign account doesn't look like either of you two.
So are you in or, quit crying how poor you are. You have to recuse yourself every time there's a vote because you own half the valley. Well, he does, doesn't he? Okay, you in or you out?
What's our contribution? We're splitting.
That's a surprise. I'm going to tell you that in a minute.
How I got ahead was counting. I'm in and Daryl's in.
I will pay a tithe on what y'all pay.
What?
I will do a tithe.
Explain this to me.
Whatever y'all give, I'm sure my campaign can do at least 10% of what you do.
I know what's in your campaign. Okay, are you in? Raj?
Do we have a number, Rex? Is it clear the number?
I'm in.
All right, well, I need to know.
I'm in, up to my ability, I'm in.
We got to make this worse. First, second, first, second, and third prize, we all put in five. How's that?
Are we, are we talking?
Okay, I'm good for five.
Are we talking the 12 to 15 year old?
12 to 15 year olds, the school that gets the most 12 to 15 year olds vaccinated.
How about each one of us?
And they got to do it at the fairgrounds so we can keep track of it, right?
Well, they'll have their cards and we might leave it up to the PTAs who are very aggressive at fundraising.
How about each one of us pick a school or a couple of schools?
No, because then we lose the incentive.
No, 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 we'll still do that.
This is too complex for me.
Yeah, Marvin, you just made it rough.
No, I was going to have Macy's send the buses to certain schools.
Advantage.
Or we could throw a party for them on the, no, that's not going to work. All right, you all in? Five, five, everybody's in for five. You guys figure out a way to make a contest that's fair, but get it out there quick.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks, guys. Okay.
Can we pay it to the city?
Yeah, we've been right or wrong.
Pay the money into the city and then have the city issue the check?
Yes.
I don't see a problem with that.
Okay. Okay, good. Hey, pick up the phone, call Palmdale, see if they're going to match this.
They should, we're joined now.
That's a good idea.
All right, okay, good. So you guys got to report to us. You know, I want the social media to be reporting how, how this contest is working because it's not going to, it's not going to happen if we don't gin it up, you know what I mean? All right, good. Because I want to beat all of LA. It turns, it turns out that, I mean, everybody knows how much Barbara loves me at Public Health. You're, you're, yeah. She actually announced that we're doing better than most in getting the vaccinations out. So I'm kind of proud of that. And that was really hard for her to do, let's face it. I mean, I got to hand it to her.
I hear you both have the same hairdresser.
Yeah, it looks that way today, doesn't it? Listen, we got to fix that camera. You can't be pointing at my bald spot. I think that's, that's a plot, you know? That's a liberal conspiracy. I'll bet you anything, whoever put that camera up there is a liberal.
Mayor?
Yeah, hi, Larry.
Yeah, hello, council, hello, mayor. I just want to say, we have, we'll be on this Facebook Live on Thursday at 9:00 AM to talk about, with Dr. Bronstein, Dr. Trong, yourself and myself, to talk about the vaccine in children. So people are already writing in, asking questions. So we're very excited about this and to be able to chance for people to interact and find, you know, get through whatever questions they have or any hesitancy. And we're looking forward to getting this population vaccinated.
So you guys did a great job. You, you, you know, you saved thousands of lives up here. And tell them to quit pointing that camera at me until I get my hair comb.
I did want to mention one other thing. Everybody's seen the pictures of the, what's going on in South Asia right now. I don't know if you've seen the pictures of, you know.
No, what's going on?
But there's a huge COVID outbreak all over South Asia right now, centered in India, but involving Nepal, involved with Bhutan, it's traveling in Bangladesh, Pakistan, and probably Burma after that. And the, so we have, there's been a big effort within the valley among a number of the doctors. Two doctors in my group in particular, Tom Lee and Nuresh Rama, to raise funds to send to contacts in South Asia through many of the doctors who grew up in those areas. And we just airlifted about $3 million worth of auction concentrators the other day. And Raj contributed, a number of people contributed. And we, and it was, it's been a big community effort. It's a small world and we're all part of it. And what happens there matters with COVID. You know, if we need to, we're not safe till we're all safe.
So what's the CDC projections? Are we, are we through this?
The CDC projects that we will probably be through this by August if all the vaccinations in the United States goes forward as planned. For the rest of the world, less than 5% of the world is vaccinated compared to us in the United States. We're at, you know, 58% with at least one dose. So there's call for the United States to begin to share its supply. I think we had ordered AstraZeneca.
The game.
Ever notice how kids seem to pull together despite their differences? We could learn some things from them.
The city of Lancaster is now part of the NICSOL Communications Network. NICSOL allows the city to provide you with up-to-the-minute information in the event of an emergency. In addition to such emergency communications, NICSOL is a great way for you to stay in touch with everything happening around Lancaster, including community news and upcoming city events. To sign up, simply text "Lancaster CA" to 888-777, or visit this webpage. Once you've signed up, check your settings to ensure you're all set to receive everything from emergency alerts and advisories to valuable community information. So join the city of Lancaster today on NICSOL.
We are launching Ready Lancaster. Everybody should be prepared, even our kids. They need to know what we need to do, what are the first three things we need to do. I challenge you to be ready, Lancaster.
Preparing for a disaster doesn't have to be daunting. With Ready Lancaster, emergency preparedness can be as simple as one, two, three. One, get an emergency kit. Two, prepare your home and know what to do in a disaster. Three, make an emergency plan with your family. Explore the Ready Lancaster webpage, where you can find resources from emergency response agencies such as Red Cross, Ready.gov, and FEMA. Join us in creating a more ready Lancaster.
We know that we're asking Americans to do a lot right now. So we're asking everyone to be selfless for others so that we can protect those who are most susceptible to this virus.
A question I often get asked is why should young people care about the spread of coronavirus? Well, we know that people with underlying medical conditions over the age of 60 are at highest risk, but they've got to get it from somebody.
Social distancing is really physical separation of people.
It's what we refer to when we ask people to stay at least six feet apart.
Not going to bars, not going to restaurants, not going to theaters where there are a lot of people. It all just means physical separation so that you have a space between you and others who might actually be infected or infect you.
We all have a role to play in preventing person-to-person spread of this disease, which can be deadly for vulnerable groups. For more information on how you can social distance, please go to coronavirus.gov.
All engineers are problem solvers. All engineers build things that will do useful work. We are looking for students who want to be here. If you come into this program, you're going to be here because you're going to work in one of our industries, or you want this cohort experience.
It takes engineers, gives them a lot of hands-on training, so that they're able to come out of the program and start work right away.
The teamwork that the students get while they're here, and the hands-on experiences they get through both the labs and engagements, but also with their internships, really puts them in a good position when they first start off for us, so we really enjoy that part.
You really have a chance to grow here, I think. You really have a chance to not only get your degree in engineering, but get field experience and become a better engineer.
The mechanical and electrical engineering degrees that are offered at the AB program fit exactly what we need in rocket propulsion for the nation.
We're pretty much the best-kept secret in the aerospace industry. The rockets that went to the moon got tested here, ballistic missiles tested here. There has been a long tradition of the aerospace industry here in the valley.
When I was nine years old, my dad took me to an airshow at Edwards, and an aircraft flew from behind us, and it seemed like it stopped in midair, turned around, and did something that I thought was impossible to do. And he said, "I work on that airplane." And from pretty much that moment on, I wanted to be an engineer.
We always call the mechanical engineers the "do-it-all" type individuals. So whenever we can find a mechanical engineer, we're going to pick them up that's really a good quality candidate. But also for electrical engineers, we have to work on the boards, the circuitry, and the system level that we're going forward with too. So we see a growing need for the electrical engineers coming out of this AB program.
You know, an engineer with 30 years of experience, there's no way you can beat that. And experiencing the engineering and teaching fields, you learn much more working on the job than you do in a classroom.
I honestly believe that the level of education, the quality of education, is just that much higher than any other similar institute.
The faculty here at the AB campus just spoil us, which is great. They have experts from the main campus, as well as industry experts like from Lockheed Barn or Northrop. They also bring people from the base where they actually show us how real engineering works, and this is why we do what we do.
You can tell that they care here, and they want you to succeed as much as they have succeeded.
I feel like we get a large support from the faculty. They're there to answer our questions. If we have ideas, they're there to listen to.
We're one of the few programs in the world that can say they're bringing industry people into and are as involved in the program as our industry people are here. They're looking for our people. They specifically want local people for those interns, and we provide them the highest quality that we can to satisfy their needs. So yeah, we have an unprecedented relationship with industry.
Our campus here exists in Lancaster because of the need of industry, as well as the need of the community. This is a face-to-face program, meaning that the instructor will be here all the time during lecture, as well as the practice. It is a hands-on, and that relationship with the industry facilitates real-time training for our students and prepping them to be successful anytime that they're going to join those companies.
The one-on-one you can get with teachers here is actually really good. You have time to ask questions.
With such a small class size, it's like everyone in the class is one of those people sitting in the front row.
We all help each other in some way or another. We all support each other. So if we have a question, we're not afraid to ask one another.
Over the course of this program, you feel as though you're with your team. You know your guys' strengths and weaknesses, and together you guys are getting through this program.
Because we're keeping our students together in a cohort, we can do extended teaming exercises. By the time the students get to graduation, they have done sets of teaming exercises.